Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 20th meeting of the Select Board, Long Meadow Select Board. This is Select Board Chair Josh Levine, who will be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Gold.
Here.
Dan Zwerko.
Here.
Tom McHusser.
Yes.
Beneath Hemavati.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Corinne Micey-Munz.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person via Zoom webinar as posted on the Agenda and Town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q&amp;A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the Agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted Agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. I will call on residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute/unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and for announcements, the annual Town Report photo contest poll. Thank you to everyone who submitted their original photo as part of the annual report photo contest. We are appreciative of receiving 10 entries into the contest. Reminder, the voting poll to help select a photo for the cover of the 2022 report is open until Friday, March 24, 2023. You can participate in the poll online at longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts or in person at Town Hall, main floor during office hours. Long Meadow Community Earth Day Cleanup. It's that time of year again to come together and clean up our town. The Earth Day Cleanup will take place on Saturday, April 1, 2023. In 2022, volunteers collected well over 2,400 pounds of garbage and about 800 pounds of recyclables. For additional information on deciding to participate, please visit longmeadowma.gov/1241/earthday.
Mr. Levine, if I may, there was an update made on the website late today, and it didn't make its way. If I could just announce something.
Please.
So there's a couple new dates for, not new dates, but updated dates for the June election, as a reminder. So on the 23rd, this Thursday, there is a deadline to withdraw nomination papers as well as file objections. And then additional information for voting, registration deadlines, and deadlines to file for absentee ballots are also posted at longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. Those deadlines for the town meeting will also be posted later this week as well.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, starting off today, we have the Cooley Brook Core Team Resident Advisor Interviews. Mike, are we, how many are we expecting tonight? I think there were...
There were five total applicants, and we had two confirmed for tonight with one tentative. We had, I believe Dave Marinelli and Kristen Carnahan both confirmed for tonight.
Okay. Do we have John Fitzgerald here or online? No?
Nope.
And Kristen Carnahan, please come on up.
Here.
Whichever you'd like. Are you going to start off by introducing yourself, your name and address?
Sure. My name is Kristen Carnahan. I live at 311 Farmington Road in Long Meadow.
Okay, and can you tell us your interest in serving on the Cooley Brook Core Team?
So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be interviewed and share answers to your questions and any additional comments. My interests are a combination of personal and professional and civic. I am a resident of Long Meadow. I've lived here 20 years. My husband and I have raised and are raising our family here, so parks are part of our everyday, whether it's, you know, walking, pushing strollers, playing tennis, playing the swings, or Little League, et cetera. Additionally, wearing my kind of professional hat, I've spent the last 25 years working in Parks and Conservation for one of the Commonwealth's largest land stewards. So in that capacity, I think that I have a lot of skills and experience that I would like to be able to contribute to the working group. But in essence, you know, I am in heart and soul a parks person, and this is my community, and so the opportunity to support the Cooley Brook Advisory Group and Working Group moving forward to establish a vision and action plan for the properties is something I'd very much like to contribute to.
Great, and could you just explain from your understanding of what the Core Team is going to do, how your day-to-day experience would apply?
Sure. So based on the past experiences with the first exercise with the Conway School, they did quite a bit of analysis in terms of the park properties, both the hydrology of the Cooley Brook and then the surrounding land, as well as park use and resident input. And so the second exercise will take that, plus the kind of the new lens of the students and the work that has been done with an H&amp;H study. So I think that my day-to-day, while my specialty is interpretation and visitor experience, I work on a number of interdisciplinary teams for the department in park planning, visitor center design, exhibit design, programming, and the like. And so having the opportunity to work in a collaborative setting with a bunch of different stakeholders, both the students, town, resident, and other kind of external partners, is something that I do regularly. I really am a proponent of an interdisciplinary approach when it comes to park planning and green space planning, and so I think that it's something that I would enjoy doing, and I bring to the table the skills and experience to do that.
Great. And are you, will you be available for the working hours meetings?
Yes, yeah, thank you for asking. So I've certainly read the sort of general expectation. I think I'm very fortunate that, you know, I have the both available time to take to participate and the flexibility with both sort of a telework schedule as well as, you know, kind of a regular work schedule that I can plan for in advance.
Fantastic. Any other questions from the board?
Well, thank you so much for applying and for being here. You talked a little bit about some of the civic nonprofit organizations that you've been involved with. Could you talk a little bit about your involvement and the kind of work you've done with them?
Sure, thanks for asking. So in my capacity here as a resident of Long Meadow, my husband and I moved here in early 2000s, and at that time, I joined the garden club, Gardeners on the Green, and worked in a variety capacities there, just as site leader at the War Memorial, community gardening as a whole and programming. So that's something that I've participated in and very much enjoyed. I've been a volunteer coach for my children throughout their kind of earlier years. Now they're much more advanced, so I leave that responsibility to those more skilled in their various sports interests. But also I serve as a scout leader for my children's scout troops, Troop 5090, which is the girls' BSA troop here in town, and also have supported my sons in Troop 90. The other thing, you know, I have been sort of a volunteer, played a volunteer capacity with the Friends Group for Bliss and Laurel Parks since, you know, 2016, and been happy to kind of co-coordinate some of the volunteer cleanups at the park, both in the spring and the fall. The one that was mentioned tonight in the remarks, the Earth Day Cleanup, I've helped to co-lead that since its inception and look forward to helping out again this year.
Tom?
Yeah, Kristen, do you have any, do you have any interaction with like Trout Unlimited? Because one of the things that, you know, that Brook probably doesn't have are fish ladders or anything like that, and we know there's a dam and so forth. Have you ever worked with that group and tried to improve those kind of habitats?
So my involvement with Trout Unlimited is very limited, but I am familiar with the organization. I'm more, I've had more experience with the Connecticut River Conservancy here specifically on the Connecticut River and at Cooley Brook, so participating with some of the work that they have done in terms of the fall cleanups and then some of the other work that they've done in sort of researching and supporting the health of the Connecticut River itself and its watershed. So to your point, I think certainly there's an opportunity to invite organizations like Trout Unlimited to that kind of conversation if all the parties interested in the project were, you know, liking to do so. And I think that there are resources like Trout Unlimited and some of the other watershed and water-related organizations in the region that could contribute.
Yeah, well, you obviously have a lot of experience, and so we appreciate you stepping forward.
Sure, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Kristen, thank you for applying also. Do you have a, you live in the neighborhood of Brook, do you have a vision for what that Brook ought to be?
Well, I think I'm a proponent of all of our parks and green spaces, and so I see that there, you know, parks and open spaces are really finite resources, especially in a state like Massachusetts. So the opportunity to really get all of the interested stakeholders to the table and identify the different things that a park needs to be or a green space needs to be for a community is really important, and then prioritizing those and looking at them in line with what is, you know, sustainable is, you know, sort of the other overlay. So, you know, certainly I see the opportunity, as was outlined in the earlier vision, that there's, you know, ecological value, ecosystem services, health of the river, you know, benefits, you know, natural habitats, wildlife, et cetera, and that has to work in tandem with public use. There's active and passive recreational use at the property, and so coming up with a strategy where that can be established and sustained, I think, is really a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Just more of a comment. Appreciate everyone's questions. Just looking at your resume, very, very impressive. Appreciate, you know, all the work you've done in the town as well. As Mark said, it's pretty much in your backyard, so appreciate everything that you've done in the community. I guess the only other question really that comes to mind is if you have any specific experience working on a similar project?
So when you ask for a similar project, in what kind of lens or what scope, and then I'm happy to answer?
Similar to what's being asked of this study here.
Yeah, so in terms of, you know, park planning, is that what you're talking about?
Sure.
Yeah, certainly. You know, my background is not forestry or ecology, but I do come with a planning experience and planning background, and so in my work capacity, what we normally do is have an interdisciplinary team that does that sort of a site assessment, public use needs, you know, natural cultural needs or resource identification, and then sort of scope that all out. A lot of times, you know, planning is done in-house, sometimes planning is done alongside with an external vendor that, you know, kind of specializes in parks, park planning, or site management, or site design, and so depending upon that, you know, we contribute in different ways. So I could speak, you know, generally about a particular project that I'm working on. So there's one property that is 20 years old. I mean, the land itself is significantly older, but the ownership of the property as a park is about 20 to a little bit more. So the original vision was, you know, put in place, it's been operating, and now it's an opportunity to kind of revisit that and see in terms of visitor use, capacity for the island and its resources, you know, what, what does the next 20 or plus years bring? And so that's an opportunity to kind of do those site assessments, look at use, visitation, the site resource itself, and then kind of scope that out through a kind of like a planning exercise. And so in that vein, that's something that I'm currently contributing on to a particular project, if that's helpful.
Great, thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right, thank you very much, Kristen.
Thank you very much for the chance to speak.
So we are interviewing tonight, and we'll be making choices at a later meeting.
Very good, thank you. Best wishes.
Do we have Elizabeth Fernandez? Dave?
Hi. Dave Marinelli, Nine Over Brook Lane.
Good to see you, Dave. Why don't you go ahead and tell us some of your qualifications and what draws you to this project?
Well, I think it's a very interesting project. You know, we've lived in town since 1988, and I remember back when, you know, there was Fishing Day in the pond there, and we've often wondered, you know, if it would make sense to dredge the pond so that it could support fish again or not. You know, I happen to live in a neighborhood that had a landscape that was also designed by the Olmsted Brothers Firm. Glen Arden, the streets and ponds and river and walking trails were laid out by the Olmsted Brothers Firm, as was a plan developed for Laurel Park by the Olmsted Brothers Firm, and, you know, sort of similar period of time in history when people changed landscapes to make them useful for fishing and skating and swimming. And things evolved, you know. In our neighborhood, we had two caretakers, two full-time caretakers that mucked out the pond in the fall and, you know, would clear the trails of brush and that sort of thing, and the 50s rolled around and the neighborhood wasn't, you know, supporting full-time caretakers. And so our landscape has kind of evolved. There's a nice little waterfall, and there's some bridges and walking trails, but it's no longer a skating, fishing, swimming resource for us. And, you know, as much as I'd like to see the pond return to, you know, fishing, I recognize that the town maybe has other financial priorities, and dredging it on a regular basis to stock it with trout for one day a year may not be what everybody thinks should be done there. And so, you know, my thinking has evolved a little bit about the park and what we should be doing with it, and I'd very much like to be part of the process of engaging citizens in what they would like the park to be about. I did sit on the previous working group and worked with the Conway School students and was interested in the, in the three plans that they came up with and how people were able to, you know, come together on those plans. And I think this is the logical next step to start to implement the plan that was put forward, and if I can contribute to that, I'd like to do so. I'm a Massachusetts Certified Arborist. My undergraduate degree is in engineering. I like and get along with all the people that are currently on the task force, and I think I can, you know, collaborate and contribute and like to do that if I can.
As a barber, so do you envision solutions involving trees for like the erosion, sedimentations?
Well, I certainly, you know, like to be consulted on those things because, you know, people have notions about, you know, the way a managed versus an unmanaged landscape should look, and I think the fact that I've gotten that additional training gives me a little bit of credibility when it comes time to discussing issues like, you know, what's impacting the trees in the park there and what we can do to improve it. So I found it interesting and helpful to get that credential and like to be able to use my experience that way if I can.
So with your work as a master gardener, you know, I think about town, and I don't know where someone would go if they were getting married and they want to take pictures with nice flowers. Is there any, and you're thinking, do you see Laurel Park as a place that we could have a nice, you know, rose garden or some kind of harbor thing where people would want to take pictures? We don't have anything like that as far as I'm concerned.
We don't, I don't think we have that in Long Meadow. You know, I think you have to be realistic about how much something like that costs. I think people go to Forest Park to get their, you know, pre-wedding pictures. I've seen a lot of wedding parties in Forest Park, and it's a very close resource, but Springfield's a much bigger city. You know, they have a forestry department, they have a full-time tree warden, they have a lot of things that we don't have. And, you know, before we were to embark on making the parks a setting for that sort of thing, I think we have a lot of work that needs to be done on our streetscapes because we have grossly under-invested in our public shade trees. We're losing them at a reasonable rate, but we're not, we're not replacing them at any kind of replacement rate. So, you know, I think it would be great if we got to that point, but we live in a town with limited resources, and we have to pick and choose what we're going to support, and I doubt if the town would get behind that as the thing that we should do.
All right, well, thanks for your feedback.
Yeah.
Thanks. David, appreciate stepping up. Whenever there's an opening, you're always either in front of us or interested.
I didn't run for the Select Board.
That's true, but I appreciate you coming here tonight. Just curious, so you did work with the Conway School previously on that first project?
Yeah, the same program that Kristen talked about, it was, you know, the Phase One planning thing that, and, yeah, I was involved in it.
So in terms of that experience, would there be anything you might change with the working relationship with the Conway School, or?
Gee, that's a, that's a pomegranate. That's, you know, a, that's just a little bit beyond my ability to say. I think, you know, we've engaged them, and I'm willing to do my part on that, but I'm not sure. It was a great experience that we had, I guess, is the bottom line, and I, I'm not involved in, you know, the implementation of that plan, so I really don't have an opinion about if there needs to be a different relationship with them, so.
Any questions? Go ahead, Blake.
Thank you for being here, David, and thank you for applying. So my question after looking at your application was to ask you about the historical context you would provide to the project. You already kind of spoke about it a little bit. Is there anything else?
Well, I think it's a fascinating part of Long Meadow's history. It was the water supply. Up until about 1920, there was a water tower where St. Andrews Church was, and, you know, some of the structures that people look at and wonder what they are, they're the remnants of the second reservoir. There was a first reservoir and a second reservoir, and then there was a steam pump and the water tower. And, you know, some of the infrastructure is decrepit and perhaps a safety hazard, but there may be things that could be left in place and create, you know, a different kind of wildlife habitat, like the concrete pool that was the second reservoir creates a habitat that's good for wading birds. And if all we had through there was a stream, then we wouldn't have that habitat. So I very much would like to preserve parts of our history that are not a safety hazard and also, you know, make the trails safe for adults and kids to walk. So if there are obstructions that are unsafe, I think those should be removed, but I know from, you know, I'm trying to keep an open mind, but my first thought is that we don't necessarily have to remove all remnants of the historic structures that are there.
All right, thank you very much.
There's this interesting story about the water tower, if I could just tell you. It was so well-built that when they tried to pull it off its foundation and tip it over to take it apart, it, you know, they hooked up teams of oxen, and they pulled it off the foundation, and it didn't fall over. So what they had to do was to build a wooden crib under one of the legs and with blowtorches cut that leg off while supported by the wooden crib, and then they had a bonfire, and when the crib burned through, the thing fell over, and then they could cut up the rest of the tower. So that's how you did things before you had, you know, a crane that could, you know, just lift the thing off the site.
Might as well take the opportunity, when you got the mic, to tell us.
Yeah, yeah, I love that story. That's a good story.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Carol Martucci? Did I skip someone?
Who was the name of?
John Fitzgerald, Elizabeth Fernandez, and Carol Martucci.
Okay.
Josh, how many people will be appointed to this?
Just one from us, right?
Yes, one resident, and then it's made up of several department heads and the Conservation Commission Chair. The, if I may, I'll just say that I did hear from Carol Martucci that she could attend the April 3 meeting for an interview, and I have not heard any confirmation from John Fitzgerald. And Elizabeth Fernandez, I think I said this earlier tonight, was attentive for tonight, so I will confirm whether or not she can attend on April 3.
Okay, and when is, when are we anticipating starting meetings?
April. So ideally, everybody would have been interviewed tonight, and then, you know, at your next meeting, you could have voted. I don't know if the board feels comfortable voting after all the interviews are completed on April 3. If not, I think pushing till...
You can't, by law.
Oh, wait till the, not the first meeting.
We have to wait at least seven days.
Okay.
Yeah, so then we'd be pushing well into April.
To mid-April. I think that the first meeting is a kickoff anyway, where we will be discussing sort of like working expectations with the Conway Schools. These are students. So I imagine we have some leeway as to when that happens in April, and I think that there probably could be, for whatever reason, if it's really very delayed selecting a resident, that we could have a kickoff meeting with the Conway students where we set expectations, but we don't discuss anything substantive. So I'm not concerned about the timing.
Okay. So why don't we see if we can get the other two candidates on the 3rd, and if not, we'll vote on the 3rd.
Great.
And I think we could do a little ranked choice voting late, and everyone can bring their first and second choice, and we'll see how that works. So a little trickier with two people, I guess, but it's the way it is. We got two very qualified candidates came in today, so. All right, do we have Eversource ready to go?
Yes, I believe so.
This is an Eversource notification of work. Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Hang on a second. Lost the audio.
Yeah, maybe not.
Yes.
Yes, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, you guys are really quiet. Um, hang on a second.
Mike, this is through the owl, right?
Yep.
All right, I heard you a little better than I planned.
Okay, should be good. It's on the correct output, so.
All right, well, we have to talk right to our little owl in the middle of the room.
Okay. All right, yeah, I heard you loud and clear that time.
Okay, great.
All right, I'll go ahead and get started. So this is Matthew Nichols, Eversource Gas, and I have Amy Henderson with us. She is our communications specialist. Am I able to share a screen here?
Uh, give me one second. Yep, it should be good.
You could try it, it should work for you now. There we go.
All right, just put it up, can you guys see it?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, perfect. So I'll just, I'll kind of kick off by talking about the projects that we discussed at our last meeting, and they're currently ongoing. So Longwood Ave, as you guys remember, far south of Long Meadow Street, and then with two side streets, Longwood, and then, I forgot the name of the other one, but as far as I know, going rather smooth is well underway. We're making good progress. I haven't heard any major concerns. I don't know if you guys have, but definitely feel free to... I don't know if you guys have, but definitely feel free to, you know, bring those up to me now if you have. Also Bliss at Burbank, as we discussed before, there's obviously some pretty big concerns about the traffic on Bliss Road, so we decided to break this up into two sort of phases. Right now, we're working on Burbank Road and we're going to hold off on Bliss until the summer. That'll be about three weeks in the summer. Continuing on, we've got Belleclaire, which is our next project. So this is a, it's, we're going to be grabbing our medium pressure on Long Meadow Street here, running a short section and then coming down Belleclaire and onto Rosemont Street. So just be installing two-inch medium pressure there just to replace our H cast iron, similar to both Lawnwood and Burbank, just, you know, standard replacement project. Any questions on that one before I move on?
Yeah, can you just, again, describe what we're seeing in green, the red, and the pink on this map?
Yep, so, yep, so the red is our maintenance call, so we're going to be six-inch. Here we go, layout page is a little easier to understand. But basically, we're going to be, we have what we call a stub here on Long Meadow Street in the grass. We're going to be tying into that, running a short, let's say 150-foot section here, and then teeing off onto Belleclaire Ave here. So the red is install and the green is abandonment of our existing cast iron. So we come out all the way down Belleclaire and then set onto Rosemont here, which is running both directions, capturing all those services.
Matthew, when you do this work, how wide a trench do you anticipate making down? I assume this is down the middle of the street or the side of, this isn't in the tree belt, this is in the roadway, correct?
Correct, yes, in the road. It'd be about a two-foot wide trench. And I believe our standard restoration is mill and pave of, usually half the road gets milled and paved. The side that we put the main on.
Right, so we have a requirement in Long Meadow that a minimum of six feet of width be paved? Actually, six feet in the smallest dimension, so if you're doing the length of the road, it would be six feet in width in this case?
Yeah, yeah, so our, and we usually do, I believe, like eight to 10 feet. That's just the size of the machine, so.
And the timing for this?
Give me just a second, I got the schedule here. Belleclaire looks like we are looking to start early to mid-April, and that's going to be about a two-month-long project.
Is that significantly longer than the other project that you brought to us last time? I don't remember it being two months.
Uh, no, I believe, I think Lawnwood and Bliss at Burbank was not, the entire duration, I don't believe, was two months. I have to verify on those. But no, this is not one of our longer projects.
Is this along the same lines where customers won't, shouldn't expect to be out for more than a day or so?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Was it now?
Well, I thought you had said that, you know, they'll get connected up, but only when they're home will you, because you've got to go relight all the pilot lights, correct?
That's correct, yep. So we do our best to, you know, every avenue that we have to contact a customer, whether it be email, phone, mailers, door-to-door, we try everything. Usually, I haven't heard of too many situations where we're not able to get ahold of them, so.
And how is it that you contact residents initially to inform them of this work?
Like I said, it's usually, I believe mailers go out first, then we'll go door-to-door, and then if we don't hear anything from those two, we usually go to phone and/or email.
And will there be any restrictions or closures on access through the street while you're doing this?
I don't believe so. We might have to, you know, reduce the width of the road and have, you know, traffic going only, you know, one direction at a time. In other words, we'll have traffic officers for all of our projects. So usually, you know, if we have to take up one side of the road, they'll, direct traffic will go in one way at a time, sort of thing.
And just for clarification to repeat, I think you're replacing cast iron pipe with PVC, correct?
Uh, polyethylene.
With polyethylene, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't recall if I asked this before. I think I may have. The cast iron, is it filled with anything to prevent collapse? Or is that something, is that a concern?
Typically, we don't fill it, no. We seal it off on either end. You know, any openings, we seal off, but we don't typically fill it, no. And I'm not aware of any issues with collapsing, being underground.
Okay.
Next project?
Moving on, next to mine is Meadow Brook. So again, another side street off of Long Meadow Street. This one, we're going to be running a significant larger portion on Long Meadow Street to kind of tie our medium pressure system together. And then we'll be coming down Meadow Brook on the side street to grab that side street. So one thing I should mention, this project does actually have some environmental, we're within 200 feet of a wetland, or there's this little stream that goes kind of under Long Meadow Street here, south of Meadow Brook. We don't expect, anticipate any direct impact to the stream itself or the wetlands, but just because we're within that 200-foot buffer, you know, our protocol was kind of triggered and, you know, we'll be submitting to Concom and attending their next meeting, submitting for permitting and all that. Additionally, I believe this area is within a historic district, so we'll be submitting a project notification form to them as well. As far as concerns go, I think that's pretty much it.
I have a traffic concern on this one. Whenever there's traffic on 91, that's the end of my street. This gets backed, it can get backed up terribly. What time of year is this, or when is this one being started and how long will the tie-in work on Long Meadow Street be done?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because we did sit down with Sean and the police chief, and he brought up this as a concern as well. So we don't anticipate any, you know, closing of lanes or anything like that on Long Meadow Street. We're going to try to stay what we call the fog line, you know, within the breakdown lane on either side. Right now, I've got us drawn up, it looks like on the east side of the road or the northbound lane. And, but he definitely made that very clear to us that, you know, traffic does get backed up here. Like you said, if they, you know, pulled down 91 or whatever, a lot of traffic is sort of funneled down this road. So we'll be definitely working very closely with him to manage the traffic issues.
And what was the timing again, Matthew?
Oh, sorry. So Meadow Brook, looking to start end of May and about three months along for that project.
Wow. And on this chart, the map that you gave us, Long Meadow Street is red and I guess down Meadows is red, but there's also green, so you're abandoning the, the green is abandoned cast iron pipe on Meadow Brook? But what's being done on Long?
Yeah, that's correct, so.
What's being done on Long Meadow Street?
Sort of a larger, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, since you don't show a green pipe or anything on Long Meadow Street, what is it you're doing on Long Meadow Street?
So basically, we have two mains on Long Meadow Street. We have medium pressure and we have low pressure. As you guys most likely know, there's a big mass DOT project coming on Long Meadow Street where they're going to be paving, I think, the majority of it. And so our, sort of our long-term goal here is to retire all of our low pressure on Long Meadow Street and all surrounding side streets. So this is kind of part of that larger initiative, but we can't, for this project, we can't make that separation yet on our low pressure system in this area on Long Meadow Street because if we were to do that, the way the low pressure system works is it's all intertwined and connected. And so if we were to make that separation now and make the abandonment, pressures would drop drastically in the surrounding neighborhoods. So we can't unfortunately do that at this time, but within the next couple of years, we hope to have, to be able to make that final abandonment on Long Meadow Street.
Just a quick comment, this is Mark Gold. I'm on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's MPC Committee, and the redo of Long Meadow Street is out there a ways.
Yeah, it's definitely a few years out there, but we've got a ton of gas customers in this area that are...
No, no, I understand it, but it's not going to be done in 2024. It's going to be done way beyond that. So just thought I'd let you know.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that one.
No, I just said that the repave of Route 5 is in, into 2025 at the earliest and maybe beyond.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, when we talked to the DPW, they said that as well. So we've definitely got some time, but like I said, we're just trying to stay way out far ahead of it because we've got a lot of neighborhoods that are still on low pressure over here.
Okay. I can go ahead and list any other questions. Go ahead.
All set?
Yep, you have the next project.
Okay, I'll continue on. So this is, I don't have as detailed a plan ready for this one just yet. This one's a little bit farther out in our schedule, but this, we're calling this one Long Meadow Street Abandonment. So basically, we're not installing a main for this project. We just have a, similarly to what I was discussing before with Meadow Brook, we've got dual main on Long Meadow Street, south of Mill Road. And this is just sort of a redundant cast iron main that I believe most of the services have been tied over. It's been medium pressure at this time. There may be a few lingering ones that we have to get to, make sure they get tied over before we abandon this, but we're just making that abandonment to reduce our low pressure system. So enough, again, no main installed here, just a cutoff. So we won't even, it'll be basically just two excavations, one at the north end and one at the south end, and then excavations for any service tie-overs.
And how long do you anticipate this one?
Sorry, what was that?
How long?
Timing for it?
Right.
So Long Meadow Street, looks like we're not getting to this one till about August, and it's looking like it'll be less than a month for that. Probably well less than a month. Other concerns, I'll continue on. So this next project, again, still in the scoping stages right now, so I don't have a full set of plans, full set of plans yet. It's called Inverness Road. So basically, this is just what we call a betterment in our system. So we've got medium pressure in this neighborhood, but Inverness Road is kind of a choke point. It's currently two inches, so we just want to deep it up to four inches. Very small project, only about 500 feet, I believe, maybe one or two services. Any questions there?
No. I've got Dan, yep.
This is Dan's work, Dan's work though, thank you for doing this presentation. What's the date on this one on Inverness here?
We don't have a date hammered down for this one yet. This one's kind of just, it's going to be a very short project, like I said, so we're kind of just keeping it floating in our schedule at this time, but I'm looking at probably most likely less than a month for duration.
Okay. And the reason why I ask, because there's a school, a middle school right fairly close by. Also, there's a lot of, you know, after-school practices that leverage the Glenbrook Middle School fields, and it's a decent cut-through as well. So my personal recommendation would be to try to push this into after-school in terms of late June or July, if possible.
Okay. So trying to figure the concern with this one as well. I will definitely note that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If nothing else, I'll continue on, and this is our last project I have on the docket for you guys tonight. Again, very, very far out, just still in the scoping stages, but essentially, we just want to, if you can see the green on the west side with the green on the right side, we want to tie our medium pressure system together. And we're planning on running down the majority of Maple Road, but I believe that the east section, I believe east of Hazardville, is under paving moratorium, so at some point, we'll be looking to kind of weave our way up into the side neighborhoods to get over to the east section there. We don't know exactly where we want to do that yet, but obviously, we want to avoid the paving moratorium.
I'm not sure what you mean by weave your way into the neighborhoods, because you're right, it was, it was last year that it was just paved, the part that's east of Hazardville.
Yeah, so essentially, we'll try to get up into the northern neighborhoods before we hit Hazardville Ave, or is it Hazardville Road, I don't know, but, and then make our way up and around, back through the neighborhoods to tie in the system on the east side without having to cut that pavement.
Is it the other side of Maple that has the big, the gas posts?
No, yeah, it's, no, it's not even Maple, it's Wolf Swamp Road.
Oh, that is Wolf Swamp.
So Matthew, I'm just trying to look at the picture that you have there because...
So in other words, we might try to do something like that.
Okay, I see what you're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, so you come down to Hazardville and then back down, okay.
Yeah, we just, so this is not a hard scope or anything, I'm just kind of, we just kind of drew this up to have something to show you, but we could, we're flexible in how we can do this. We just want to get these two systems tied together.
Yeah, I mean, even though west of Hazardville on Maple Road, it's relatively, you know, by that I mean probably five years old, but I know that's beyond our three-year moratoriums.
Yeah, we'll definitely, you know, take a look, and we'll be in touch with Sean at the DPW about how we want to, you know, restore this and everything, but we'll definitely mill and overlay any sort of trench that we make, so.
And again, when you say this is in the scoping phase, that means it's after August?
Let me look on the schedule of this one. Actually, this one's looking like middle to end of May, so we just have to get, yeah, we just have to get a scope nailed down and a set of drawings put together.
And how long is this going to take then? This is a lot of...
A little over three months for this one. Quite a bit of main that's going to get run.
Right.
Okay. It seems like we've gotten a lot of these coming in. Is that, is this unusual?
It is.
Why are we seeing so many projects happening now? An initiative or, what's causing it?
You're just saying the quantity of projects?
Right.
Well, so the only reason we had, you know, last time we met was in, what, January, I think? And the only reason we only had two projects on there is our winter scope, like working during the winter is, you know, drastically reduced. When spring usually hits, that's when all of our crews are ready and available, ready to work. All the towns are opening up, and so we just, it just so happens that this year, we've just got a ton of work in Long Meadow, based on our prioritization system and everything. These are the projects that end up being prioritized. They usually, it kind of goes in waves, like some years we work a ton in Springfield or a ton in Chicopee. It just so happens that this year, Long Meadow, a lot of these projects were high on our priority list.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Matthew, I, I know I said this the last time, and I suspect it was you, but I'd be remiss in not repeating it, because one of the places you pointed out is Hazardville Road, and that's the place where we had a, a collapse, a trench collapse and a fatality. And so I think the Eversource needs to notify your crews, and I know there's subcontractors of yours, that we anticipate that you should have some kind of a trench col- collapse prevention system in place when you, when you dig these trenches in the town of Long Meadow. It is all sand, and I would hate to see something happen from, from all this. And I know it, it makes the digging a little bit more, uh, timely, time consuming at some point, but it, it saves lives, and it would have saved the life in, on Hazardville Road. So I strongly encourage you to meet the requirements of trench safety.
Yeah, absolutely, I appreciate the concern. I'll definitely, uh, pass that message on to our contractors.
Yeah, speaking of which, Josh, we, we had a trench safety policy that's still sitting at the DPW.
Because the DPW has their own policy, we are, so I, I hope that that has been given to Eversource, but yes, we're, we're still cracking on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to comment, Matthew, also, is that, uh, that, uh, that tragedy was also based on a great deal of rain that washed everything out, and, um, you know, the part that collapsed was the road, you know, quite a, quite a bit away from the trench, so it was like, you wouldn't have expected it to be all hollowed out, but, um, that is an area where, where rain really does collect, so, uh, just as long as your folks are aware of it, because we, we wouldn't want any fatalities there, that's for sure.
Yeah, definitely understood. Thank you, guys.
Josh, Matt, have you, um, shared the tentative schedule with DPW at this time, or is it kind of still just like a working schedule?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we're constantly shruffling and making changes, but we're, we're, we're doing our best to keep it, you know, I've been, um, I've met with Sean, you know, four or five times this year so far, and I'm, I'm trying my best to keep him abreast of everything as it moves, and, um, so, he'll, uh, he'll definitely let me know if, uh, if I'm not doing a good enough job on that front.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate you here, that, uh, you've been coordinating with the town, uh, with DPW and LPD, and, uh, continue to do that, and, uh, we thank you again for coming in tonight. Anything else from the rest of the board?
No, I just want to make sure that the resident, I mean, we're, there's a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of houses involved, and so I'm just, want to make sure that the residents are notified, and I assume Mike will have part of this in however else we communicate with residents.
Yeah, we'll put out, based, that's why I asked the question about the schedule, based on the timing of everything, we'll have the message boards, we'll have, um, if necessary, code red messages go out, uh, but we'll also put messages on Facebook and social media platforms as well. We'll coordinate with, uh, DPW and Chief Stocks on that.
Actually, yeah, I did hear some positive, uh, there was good communication on, on the other, the current gas project from Eversource, so, uh, people are aware of it, and, uh, gotta continue, keep it that way, that's a good point, Mark. All right, thank you, Matthew, appreciate you coming in.
All right. Thanks, guys.
And thank you, Amy. All right, next on the agenda, we have resident comments. Anybody signed up, Mike?
Um, I have no one on the Zoom.
I saw a hand raised before.
They, I saw that too, they, they're no longer in.
Okay. All right, uh, any select board comments? Go ahead, beneath.
Yeah, um, so, I know I had, uh, you know, we had the budget meeting last week, but this being my first select board meeting, um, I just wanted to, uh, yeah, take this opportunity to, you know, thank the people of Long Meadow for placing their trust in me, um, you know, the fact that they had to go out and vote twice within a month, uh, the significance of that is not lost on me, and, um, you know, I, I'm grateful, uh, for the confidence, um, that they have in me to, to be here, and I'm, I'm excited to be here doing the job that I was elected to do. And also, you know, uh, looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you, guys, for the, you know, the warm, uh, welcome, and, um, you know, I think that we've got a talented select board, and I think we do a lot of good things for this town, so I'm excited to work with you all. Um, the second, uh, comment I wanted to make was, a few of us had a chance to attend a legislative event at the Willie Ross School, uh, for the deaf, um, and it was a great event, uh, we got to learn a lot about the services they provide. They actually provide services to folks within an hour radius, uh, of Long Meadow, um, and they're just doing a lot of really, uh, really exciting things. Um, in speaking with the president of the school, um, one of the things that he wanted to really impress upon the select board, um, members that were there, was that, you know, a lot of folks don't even know that the school is in town, uh, and so, uh, you know, they're trying to raise awareness, uh, in the hopes that, you know, uh, that folks in town will, you know, want to get more involved or, or support the school, so, um, I wanted to mention that, uh, as well.
Great. Thank you, beneath. All right, Corinne, you're in the hot seat tonight, Town Manager Report.
All right, so just have one item on the report, and this is in regards to the, um, Department of Mental Health Jail slash Arrest Diversion Grant Program. Through the great work of the Long Meadow Police Department, a grant application was submitted to the Department of Mental Health Jail slash Arrest Diversion Program. The proposal creates a shared arrangement with the East Long Meadow Planning Department, ELPD, with the Long Meadow Police Department, LPD, serving as the lead community. The applicant requests funds, uh, to improve delivery services to those in our communities who struggle with mental health and wellness. To achieve this, the departments would work with a co-responder from the Center for Human Development, uh, which is a local nonprofit specializing in mental health care. The master's level clinician provided by the, um, Center for Human Development will assist officers at the onset of the call for service in which a community member is in crisis of suffering from a mental illness. The goal of the co-response is to enhance the agency's response to assisting persons in crisis, suffering from a mental disability, or with ongoing and/or co-occurring substance abuse problems. This goal can be achieved by connecting those individuals in need with crisis, um, and other mental health resources in the community. This connection will divert persons with mental health struggles from the criminal justice system or local hospital emergency departments, and shift them to behavioral or mental health providers that can offer more specialized assistance. If links to services are effectively made, LPD and ELPD will see a reduction in calls for service with that community member. Success and attainment of these objectives will also be determined by a reduction in transports to emergency departments at low school hos- at local hospitals. If successful, less persons should be going to the ED, and more should be referred to non-emergency mental health providers. LPD and ELPD should see fewer emergency calls for persons suffering from mental health illness or crisis because of the teamwork approach produced by the co-responder model of policing. Thank you specifically to Sergeant Lombardi, who spearheaded the work with this important grant pa- grant application. While the grant application is pending, LPD will continue, uh, to work out the details in a draft MOU, Memorial of Understanding, and have conversations with other communities who are currently taking part in this program.
Great, so this is written with the, uh, it sounds like you assume it's going to go through, is that correct?
Um, I don't know that that is, uh, I'm, it's a competitive grant program, so I, I think it's a wait and see, um, but I do know that they are optimistic about the chances.
Tom, any response to that?
Well, well, I think it's great news. I, I, I think that having a combination like that is really gonna be effective, um, you know, I know, I've worked a lot of people who've been out of control over the years, and there's just times when you need someone there like a police officer to restrain them and handcuff them, uh, and then there's other times where it's more appropriate to just, um, you know, get to de-escalate the situation, so, um, no, I'm excited, I think that's, that's really gonna be good, yeah, hopefully. And then the funding, we don't know, will, will it last, uh, for so many years and then have to be replaced by the towns involved?
I actually don't have the details on the length of the grant, um, proposal that was submitted, um, and the, the program itself, but that's certainly something that I can, um, work with Sergeant Lombardi on getting details for, and sharing it.
All right. I just want to address, uh, one thing in the building monthly report, uh, so, in case anybody watching, uh, saw, read it, uh, the, the two, uh, code enforcement agents, I, I think originally, we thought they were going to be one at night, one during the day, or some sort of shift like that, and, uh, it, in the report this month, it says that they essentially have territories in town, half of the town. Uh, I asked Paul Healy about that, and he said that that is, um, this seemed to be a better way for it to work, and if there are any overnight concerns, uh, there can be an enforcement agent will be sent to there, uh, and will, regardless of territory. So, uh, that is still being addressed, uh, and like, if anything else, uh, if you see something, you can send a report to Paul, uh, but that, that jumped out at me, but it's, it's, seems like it's working really well, and Paul's had, been happy with the program, so. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, um, in the store's library report, there was a quote in there that just, I, I have to share, uh, it says, "The winner of the Discovery Room Bingo Raffle said, 'This is the best day of my life. It's the hundredth day of school, I won a prize, and I learned to snap.'" It doesn't get any better than that, you know? Uh, so that was kind of neat, that we're providing that kind of excitement to young people in town. Uh, the other thing was, it was really nice to see that they had someone there doing a puppet show, um, that's a very old art, and it's nice to see that it's happening in the town of Long Meadow, in our library, so, that was nice.
Go ahead, beneath.
Yeah, just to go back to the grant program, uh, real quickly, so, um, it, it says that, you know, the CHD will assist, uh, at the onset of the call, um, so they'll physically be going out with the police officer?
Um, I am not totally sure how the program would work. I don't know if it's, if it's, um, that they are looped into the call when the original call is made, and then they respond according to that, or if there's, um, a different type of arrangement set up, but that's something I can also follow up with them and, um, send a message to the board along with a question about how long the program would last for if awarded.
Perfect, yeah, then you're, yeah, because I was just curious if they were physically going out with the officer, you know, would we have someone housed at the police department?
Right, would it be an every time thing, or just like they get called in from a, uh, like wherever their office is? Central station, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yep. Thank you.
Anything else, reports?
I just have one thing, Josh.
Go ahead.
So when I was looking through the building, uh, report, it mentioned, uh, Ume Restaurant. Um, I thought it was going to be a taco restaurant, and I just, well, it says...
What does the report say?
Says there was gonna be a new Asian restaurant.
Oh, that's, uh, probably a typo on Paul's end, and the, the information that we have is that it's a, um, taco type, uh, concept coming in. And that's, you know, we've only heard that, uh, from, in so many words, they said taco type concept, we don't have any more details than that, but that's the latest that we've heard, and that's what went, uh, before the planning board.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Could be fusion, Dan.
Yeah.
That's right.
If nothing else, we'll move on to old business, uh, approval of the March 6th, 2023 meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the March 6th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I...
Go ahead, Dan, on our mark.
Uh, I sent, actually, I sent Mike's, a bunch of typos and corrections, so I'm subject to those corrections based on what we saw.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
Motion's subject to the revisions, um, all those in favor? Okay. Moving on to the fiscal year 2024 capital plan vote.
So just, oh, sorry, just for reference, I think the one that is on the agenda is just the capital planning committee recommendations, I don't think it has any of the suggestions incorporated in yet, so just people that are in line when referring to that.
So do you, do you have an ability to make the changes on the fly, or we'll have to...
I can, I can make, yeah, not directly, but I'll, I'll make them on the fly.
Okay. All right, thanks for coming up, Paul. Uh, Mark, you have some comments?
Yeah, just some comments, and, and I think we spoke about at least one or two of them earlier, and that is, the town managers had requested an additional $25,000 for, I think it was under project development, so it'll go from 100,000 to 125,000. And, uh, you know, I, I know we had a quick discussion with Mr. Sean Van Dusen when he was here, and didn't get back to, you know, I didn't hear more from him, but I'm concerned that it does not include specifically guardrails that it had in the past, and he said, "Well, we can use Chapter 90 money for guardrails." The problem is, if this goes into the town warrant that says for road repaving, we can't use it for guardrails, it must be used as stated for, in the town warrant, so I'd like to modify this to say road paving or guardrails at the discretion of the, of, of the DPW Director of the DPW.
Did he say la- last week, I know he said that they would do them at the same time, it's not part of the same project? Pay, in other words, paving wouldn't necessarily do the guardrails, that was my impression?
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting words in his mouth, I just remember him saying, "Well, we can use some Chapter 90 money to pay for guardrails," which in fact is the case, I mean, we use Chapter 90 money to buy trucks. So, you know, the state is pretty liberal on the use of Chapter 90 money. The problem is that, in my opinion, is that, you know, capital planning or a warrant article says for road repaving, it doesn't say for road repaving and guardrails or any, anything else, and so, we, we probably do it at the same time, I think we would, you know, we have guardrails, some are the aluminum, or galvanized metal, excuse me, they're not aluminum, galvanized metal, and a lot of them are the wooden post, but, but we need to be able to pay for those, and I think we ought to modify that to allow that to come out of this, this bucket, and that's...
That, that sounds, that sounds great to me. I'm gonna give Sean some flexibility on that.
So anyway, I, my, my comments is to, to increase the project development to 125,000 dollars, road repaving would, road repaving and guardrails would go to 675.
Well, there's, we have some, there's some, uh, balance of, um, of 42,000, so I think under Lynn's original request, the project development would still, we wouldn't have to cut down on the road paving and still could fund the project development at 125. And then there's still 17.4,000 left.
I gotta make this bigger, because I can't read the numbers.
Because the total, the total recommendation is 2, 2,315,000, and the total available is 2, 2,357,496.
Right.
So my, my thinking was, we put, get the 125 for project development, which is just really recategorizing what, uh, was originally proposed, and then we could put the 17 towards road paving and, and guardrails, and then cover a guardrail or two.
Well, I, I don't know that we necessarily need to do that, I mean, if you want to, that's fine, I'm, I'm just saying, I think we need to at least give the DPW the authority to, to do road, go road paving and guardrails, that's all I was trying to...
Yeah, I think that's, that's good. So Paul, if we, if there is still a 17,000 left on, unaccounted for, where does that fall into, uh, in our planning and our budget?
Um, it would more than likely, at the end of the year, be closed out. I mean, right now, if you want to repurpose it, which it sounds like you want to do, that's fine, but at the end of the year, you know, usually we close these out, they have a life of only so long, if the projects are done, it's gonna go back into the, um, capital stabilization fund more than likely, we'll look at the source of where it was funded.
No, I think you're asking too, Josh is saying that we will have, after all these allocations are, are recommended, 17,000 dollars left in the capital stabilization fund, so...
Well, I, I think he's taking balance, the balance is the prior year capital projects under 113, and I think those are, if I'm reading this correctly, um, and you're gonna repurpose some of those capital project funds.
There's one interesting one, we discussed this before, is we should use that, the prior balances.
Right, we, we, right, and what you're, what I'm interpreting is that you're repurposing them now, that you're, you're, you're gonna put 100, you're gonna put 25,000 dollars for the project development, and if you want to use additional money, um, you know, that would put us at 2,340,000, we'd have 17,000 dollars left over. If we don't, if we don't repurpose that 17,000 dollars, it's gonna end up back into the capital stabilization fund.
And it'll show on that line out of next year?
Yeah, next year, it'll be, it'll moved up, it'll be moved up a line in essence in how it's presented here.
Right, okay.
But whatever projects they're from, those projects will be closed out, and again, it'll be kind of just in... it'll be kind of just an unreserved amount of money for next year. It'll move up one line.
But, but Paul, where it says balance on prior year capital projects, is that balances that have, that will not never be spent, or just balances that have not yet been spent?
There are balances that the projects are complete, but not closed into the capital stabilization fund. Those that have been closed into the capital stabilization fund, they're up in the capital reserve.
Okay.
Okay. So it's projects that are still in the same, a same appropriation that they were purposed for, but have not been closed out yet.
So I guess my concern is that because they're not closed out, they get, may get drawn against. Shouldn't, but they could.
They, they could. But it, there's a monthly report that goes around from the accountant's office, and we get status updates. These were said to be projects that were completed by the departments who had the control of them.
We're talking about $25,000, Josh.
Well, no, we're talking about 17, even, which-
No, 17, we're not gonna use. We're just gonna let it roll. It's the question, do we take $25,000 out of prior year projects that have been closed out, or do we just say we're gonna run $25,000 less in roads? In order to put the money into engineering, right?
Right. Yeah. Well, I'd rather put it up in engineering and fully fund the paving. Anyone else? Any other thoughts from Porter?
I, I agree. I mean, I think our roads, we've driven on our roads plenty of times, and they're in dire need of, of help. So, my support of Josh.
All right. Anything else, huh?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital planning recommendations with the following adjustments. That project development will be increased from $100,000 to $125,000, and that the line item that says road paving, paving will be renamed to road paving and/or guardrails.
You have a second?
And for total, for total expenditure of 300, $2,340,00, for total recommended capital expenditure of $2,340,000.
You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All of those in favor? All unanimous. Excellent. Moving on to the 2024 budget vote.
Paul, can you go over for us the changes that were made from last week to this week? Because I noticed that there are some, hopefully minor, but-
Yeah, let me, I'm trying to think of exactly which ones were done. I think there were, there was $14,000 was added to the code enforcement officers from $50,000 to $64,000. The other thing that was done is that we had looked at the opioid settlement money, and that amount was $132,000 in the budget. We looked at what is expected for next year, what we know, and I don't say guaranteed, but based upon the current scheduling, that amount was drawn down to that $23,000. So there was a big drop there. You know, if additional opioid money comes in, we can appropriate it at that point in time. But based upon the schedules that we have in place, and based upon what came in in FY23, that FY24 amount is only $23,000 at this point in time. I think those, the other thing, Mark, I think that was added, and it's not necessarily within the budgetary line item. It's more of a broader one. I had mentioned how, on the original cherry sheet estimate that came in, that the state had omitted a reimbursement for exemptions, that I had estimated that to be roughly $60,000. And the first $14,000 went to the code enforcement officers, and that left us a balance of $46,000. There is an additional warrant article. I don't recall what number it is. There's a warrant article in there for wage settlements for that $46,000.
I also noticed, Paul, that you did adjust the-
You adjusted the direct, the direct director-
The partner, assistant directors, so that their budget, their payment is all, their salaries are all budgeted.
Their salaries are fully funded in the general fund.
And it says, there's a note that says 50%.
Right. We still have the expectation that it will be a payback from the revolving fund of $40,000, roughly half of that.
Go ahead, Mark.
So I have a question, Paul. And, and I know this is, for people at home, I apologize how this is gonna come across, but it's gonna come across badly. But it needs to be asked. So I read in the paper the other day that the governor is submitting a supplemental budget for next year for, to, to increase the amount of payment for special, for special education out of district tuitions. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how they distribute it, but my guess is, we're talking maybe $100,000 to the town of Long Meadow kind of thing, if that happens. So my question, Paul, is, you know, given the history of the state and passing their budget, which, for those people who don't know, they waited till the fiscal year starts, July 1st, and they've been till August before they passed their budget. So, you know, it, it's gonna be long after we have our town meeting that we appropriate money. So, if, if we appropriate this budget, which has a 4.6 or 4.7%, something like that, increase to the school committee, and then the state comes in with a supplemental budget for exactly one of the reasons that, you know, Superintendent O'Shea indicated was causing that increase, you know, how does the town recover that money back to our taxpayers, so that we actually end up not having what we appropriated go to the school committee, plus the supplemental money from the state? And, you know, I, I know it can't be too much clearer than that, but my concern, obviously, is that, you know, we appropriate money, and then the state adds money onto it. And the school committee, who has, you know, absolute authority for bottom line, line and not line item, you know, restrictions like, like we do, although we have more department restrictions, you know, how can we make sure that, that, because we're right up against 2.5% as an increase, and we would have liked to have been below it?
Well, there's, one, it's how, depends on how the money comes in, first of all. I mean, more than likely, it's going to come in under the circuit breaker avenue, where that money goes directly to the school department. It's the only way that, which, Mark, you could maybe handle this, if that amount is known. At the fall town meeting, you could revise their budget downward. Alternatively, you could ask the school committee for a commitment, that they return that money at the end of the fiscal year. But those would probably be the two ways in which you can handle it. Other than that, you know, the, the community is gonna vote X amount of dollars. Those X amount of dollars are going to be under the authority of the school committee, and that grant goes directly to the school committee, and those monies are under the direct authority of the school committee also, until, you know, otherwise the town meeting takes some action on the general fund appropriation.
But Paul, you know, we've had several years where the school committee has, or the, the school department has given a lot of money back to the town, am I right? I mean, one was like the $200, $300,000.
Yes. They, they, there was a history where they were returning back quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
They had over, you know, not the most recent years, but, you know, a few years prior, during the COVID times, they turned back a lot of money prior to that, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Has not been so much, you know, last year, I think it was a very small amount last year. But they have a history of turnbacks.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, I can appreciate your concern, Mark, but I think they've been pretty upfront about giving money back.
I guess I didn't do a good job articulating my concern. My concern isn't about the school committee. It's that we, we've taxed people at 2.5% when we meet, maybe only needed to tax them at 2.1% or 2.2%. So even though that money is gonna be there, and hopefully the school committee will in fact have extra money at the end of the year and turn it back.
Right.
It's now part of our tax base, and we've taxed residents, as opposed to saying, you know, if, for example, if we knew today that that money was coming in, we'd set our budget that much lower, and we'd tax residents below 2.5%. So it's not, it's not so much a question of will the school committee spend that money or not spend the money. The question is, how can we prevent us from taxing the residents for money that's only gonna end up being free cash a year from now? I mean, let's face it, you know, my concern has always been, free cash means that we, we didn't do as good a job as we should have done to, in estimating our expenditures. Now, you know, for the last couple of years with COVID and people switching jobs, it's been very, very difficult. But if at the end of the year, we have $2 million in free cash, that means we over, overtax the residents of Long Meadow by $2 million. And, and we shouldn't be doing that, given the fact that taxes mean a lot to a lot of people. Plus, we clearly didn't need the money. And in this case, I'm saying, you know, we, that, that was my question, is how do we prevent the, from taxing the residents if it turns out we don't have to?
Right. So in, in your example, I mean, you said that we might get $100,000, right? And we have 15,000 residents, you know, $100,000 doesn't go very far. I mean, what would be the difference in the tax rate for $100,000, Paul, like 25 cents?
About four cents.
Huh?
About four cents.
About four cents. So that's where, you know-
Well, I, I get it, but it's four cents. I mean-
Yeah. No, I know. But, but I think that, you know, the, the school department has been-
It's, it's not a question of whether they're gonna return the money. I think we can jawbone, if nothing else, to say, "You got extra money, you should return it." The point is, you know, should we, you know, is there a way to keep us from having to tax our residents for money that we know is just gonna come around the next year? Remember, that four cents this year is gonna be there forever. It's, it's additive, Tom. It's like compound interest. So it's not like, well, we'll add four cents this year, but if we need to, we can take it away next year. You can't. Once it's in the tax base, it's in the tax base.
Yeah. If we adjusted in February, it's, we're not changing the tax payments.
Right. You would have to adjust it at the fall town meeting. I mean, if you want, if you were gonna make an adjustment to lower what the general fund is providing, it would have to be done at the fall town meeting. It'd have to be done before the tax rate is set. Tax rate is set is normally set in early December.
Okay. I don't see what else we could do. I appreciate your concern, Mark, without knowing the number.
Well, I mean, you know, in, in my mind, the question is, can you pass a budget contingent upon the state aid? In other words, the budget will be this if this is the aid, and the budget will be something different if there's a different state aid, so that we know that we don't have to. And, and I, again, I don't, I know we've never done it. I don't know that we can do it. But I've also never heard a situation where, you know, a new governor coming in has, has submitted a supplemental budget that will, you know, significantly impact the issue that was identified by our superintendent of schools as causing a significant increase in the school budget. That's all. That's my reason for asking.
I just like to add, though, Mark, and this is not about the $100,000, but it's about the, you know, when we do have free cash, it doesn't necessarily mean that we are taxing the residents to the capacity. And by that, free cash comes from two sources. It comes by excess revenues that we have also. So right now, we have a surplus of, of tax, of interest revenue coming in. That's gonna be part of free cash. It's nothing to do with the expenditures.
From reduced spending, because we do a good job of spending less. I get it.
Yeah, okay. And I'm also, it, but it's not, you know, again, we, we may appropriate $50,000 for a laborer at the, at the DPW, and the position never gets filled. And, you know, we want to fill it. It doesn't get, and it gets turned back, and it's in next year's free cash. So it's, you know, I don't want to, you know, it's, you made it sound very simplistic.
No, no. And I didn't, I apologize if I did that. I'm not trying to, it's not sinister. I mean, it-
Yeah, no, I understand.
But if, if you know you don't need to tax people, and, you know, or the worst case is, if you find out in August that you didn't need to, you know, to, to raise that money, you know, how can we, and I guess what I'm doing here is kind of setting us up to say, if we find that out in August, I'm gonna be back here saying, let's go into the fall town meeting and say, you know, we, we'd like to be able to reduce the tax rate on our residents.
Yeah. And then I would assume that we would know by the summer. I mean, it usually does take the legislature-
Right, right.
You know, late, late June, I mean, we're waiting on House numbers. We gotta wait on Senate numbers, and gotta wait for the two chambers to get together. It's just, that's just the way the process is. Yeah, you're right, though. We may not know until the end of June, early July, by the time everything is settled.
People will be beating down the doors to vote to lower the tax rates.
Well, I, I mean, the, the point is, you know, we don't know now, and we won't know now. We might not know for quite a while. But, you know, if that happens, it, I think our responsibility is to say to people, okay, you know, we've asked you for X amount of dollars. The state's gonna supply Y. We'll reduce the tax burden.
I don't mean to be flippant about it, but the governor's supplemental budget is a suggestion. They never go through.
Yeah, it's a good thing to have on, on our radar.
Oh, yeah.
To be thinking about. Yeah.
All right. Do we have a, a motion to approve the fiscal 2024 budget?
I'll move that we approve the fiscal 2024 budget as revised on March 16.
Second.
Any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Okay. Just for the record, I'd just recite the amount. It's $80 million, 80,802,613. I believe that's the bottom line of March 16 printout that you have.
So noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And thank you to everyone who, for their hard work on this. All right. Last piece of new business, the 2020, annual town meeting 2023 warrant.
So the copy that you received on, would have been either Thursday or Friday, is the most up-to-date copy of the warrant going right now. So that is what I have on the screen. This is a live edit, so I can make any adjustments as necessary.
I, yeah. I, I did get a notice from the DPW today that they have additional bills that would go in Article 2 with bills of prior year. That new total, the total bills of prior year would be $16,085.11, but it would also be coming from four funding sources as opposed to just the general fund. It would be broken down as the general fund amount would be $15,602.16. Sewer retained earnings, $161. Water retained earnings, $161. And storm water retained earnings, $160.99. Making that adjustment would also reduce Article Number 6 to $169,397. $196,397. Again, right now, you have $500,000 in free cash.
Paul, is it 196 or 169?
I'm sorry, 169. I'm sorry. 169,397. Again, right now, you have a half a million dollars in free cash. With the two adjustments, it, it brings it down to, brings it down to zero, which is part of the policy in Number 6, that any amount remaining at the end of the fiscal year be transferred into the operating stabilization fund.
Mike, that's 1699.
Yep. And these, these are just for notes. We'll, we'll go in there. We'll format it tomorrow.
Josh, traditionally, we've gone article by article and just approved them.
Yep. Any other changes, Paul, before we get started?
I don't believe so. It's just that one-
All right. If anything jumps out at you when we're going-
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's, actually, there is a minor change, but it's in the warning, Article 21, but we get there.
Okay.
If I may, we also just wanted to let you all know that the, in regards to any of the-
the articles that refer to the addition or amendment of bylaws, the citations that are included in this draft warrant are for the general code revised citations, not our current code. We fully anticipate that we will have positive news from the Attorney General's office within.
Like later this week or beginning of next week?
Yeah, within a few weeks about the, about that reformatting. If, for whatever reason, by the time that we have to print the warrant, that approval has not come through, we're going to go back and revise the citations to be concurrent with our current, our, what's currently on the website in terms of the bylaw formatting. So those are non-substantive changes, it's just literally the citations where, you know, like the chapter titles. But that, those are something we hope are not in flux, but.
Has that not gone through because of the planning board notice issue?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're currently in the stage where they have, the public has three more days, I believe, to voice any objections to, to that, and then pending note, we haven't had any so far. And then, you know, assuming that we don't get any in the next three days, we'll be able to resend over the paperwork to the Attorney General's office, and they'll pick up their review where they left it off.
Okay. I was going to ask, well, what would happen if some objective, but I don't want to ask.
Yeah, we don't.
All right, let's get started.
Move the approval of Article One.
Here we go, second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Move the approval of Article Two.
Second.
As, as just amended?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further? All of those in favor? Anybody?
Move for the approval of Article Three. Second.
All of those in favor?
Move for the approval of Article Four.
Second.
Anything further? All of those in favor?
I'll move Article Five as amended by Paul tonight.
What's Article Six amended?
Article Five is stayed.
Right?
Yeah, that was Article Six.
Oh, it was Six, I'm sorry.
I'll second Article Five.
All right, then we'll, we'll just do Article Five as that.
All of those in favor?
Making a heart on yourself, Tom.
All right. And Article Six as amended by Paul tonight.
Second.
All of those in favor? Does the, the number down below in the narrative also need to change? Oh, that says of, that's in the past, never mind.
That's the fund balance.
Yeah, okay.
Move for the approval of Article Seven. Second.
All right, any discussion on that? All of those in favor?
I'll move Article Eight.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Just a question, Article Seven did not have any dollar figures on it, so it's going to be based on the.
It's going to be based on the, the number they recited in total.
Thank you.
Before, that 80,802,613 will be the total, based upon the breakdown and detail that was provided.
Thank you. All right.
Same with Article Eight.
Article Eight is capital?
Yep.
And Article Nine, oh, this, this is staying, this is the one you said is the balance of the, the abatements?
Right.
Or the exemptions, okay.
Okay, I'll move Article Nine.
Second.
All of those in favor?
I'll move Article Ten, District Improvement Financing.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All of those in favor?
I'll move. Go ahead, go ahead. No, you go.
Move for the approval of Article One.
Second.
All of those in favor?
I'll move that we approve Article Twelve.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All of those in favor? Mike, on this one, I, on thirteen, I think you could just change seven twenty-three to July 2023.
Yep.
Okay, I'll move to accept Article Thirteen.
Second.
Any further discussion on that one? All right, all of those in favor?
I'll move Article Fourteen.
Second.
I just had some discussion on this one. So we're, was this DPW gave us the writing for this?
Yes.
Okay. I guess there's the only discussions, it looks like we're well passed on this one, and we saw a two, three-year delay. So it looks like we're just running a hunk of junk out there, but if that's, it is what it is, I guess.
We can, we could work with, which I think Lisa said this, maybe we could work with the DPW on modifying it if need be. We have until kind of the, the time it goes out to print, and then when we start putting out public education on it.
Okay.
Just to give you a little background, from Articles Twelve through Fourteen, we plan to do education videos on for the fire department apparatus, as well as the DPW jet trap. So we'll, we'll have plenty of information out there, and we'll modify if need be. This was kind of a draft, and we didn't, you know, we just implemented it in there.
All right, yeah, as long as it's got some context, that'd be good.
Yep.
All right. Further?
We need a vote on Fourteen.
Yes, all of those in favor?
Okay.
Fair and in motion.
Article Fifteen and Sixteen deal with, we talked about last, two weeks ago, or last week, I should say, about the, oh, having a, a special purpose stabilization fund, where the opioid money would go directly into the stabilization fund, and then would have to be re-appropriated afterwards. Currently, it's, see, it's, it's kind of hard, because currently, it has to go into the general fund per, per the Department of Revenue. The state is working on a, an amendment to one of the Mass General laws where it does not have to go into the general fund, but until that gets appropriated, you know, we have to do, do something with it. The problem, you know, as all this developed, the problem that now happens to, if, if we accept this, we have to minimally keep a, an opioid stabilization fund for a minimum of three years before we can rescind it. It's not the worst-case scenario, but if there's a new law that comes into place that would have been easier, we're not going to be able to take advantage of that new law until three years.
Paul, what, why can't this wait till the fall? If money comes in, can't we then create this in the fall and then appropriate it into that stabilization fund? It's the same fiscal year.
I mean, I think we could, Mark, and I think that's probably the best, the best way to, way to do it, is to wait until the fall.
I think we talked about that last time, and you're going to bring it to us, and then we can discuss.
Yeah. But, you know, again, there was just some recent, the Department of Revenue was speaking last week at a Auditors and Accountants Association meeting, and they always give it, they always give a DOR update, and one of the factors was that, again, they're looking to change a current Mass General law in order to make this handling of the opioid money a little bit easier, and not go, not go through this process.
No, I was just going to move that we delete Articles Fifteen and Sixteen and defer them to the fall town meeting.
It sounds like we've got two reasons to do that, so.
Yeah.
I was going to move to accept them tonight, so, I don't know. Because if we're going to separate this money out, I mean, you, you really think that they're going to announce something that would?
I, I do, actually, they were supposed to do it last year, there was talk about it, the legislature never got to it. And, and, and what it would do, Tom, it would basically set up a special revenue account where any of that opioid money actually went right into its own special revenue account.
Okay.
And could be expended directly out of there, instead of going through the mechanism of a stabilization fund going in, have to be re-appropriated out. So it would be a little bit, it would have been a little bit easier if they do pass that change in the statute.
Well, I'm going to second Mark's motion to delete these. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all of those in favor? All of those opposed?
I'll move Article Seventeen. Select it.
All of those in favor?
Move. No, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, no.
Move for the approval of Article Eighteen. Second.
All of those in favor?
Move for the approval of Article Nineteen. Second.
You need a spacing between standards and end.
Nineteen?
Yep, third line to the right side. Can't take the legal writing teacher out of me, unfortunately.
That's okay, we need it. The more eyes, the better.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I believe. All right, anything further? All of those in favor? Okay, Article Twenty.
Yeah, move for the approval of Article Twenty.
Okay, and then second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, I'm just going to.
Go ahead, Mark.
I, I made my comments last time, I'm going to vote against it now. I'm going to have to speak against it and vote against it at the floor town meeting.
Okay, all of those in favor? All of those opposed?
Article Twenty-One, the wording change would be, you know, to see if the town will fund the community preservation project to retain qualified trail contractors to execute a mapping and condition assessments of Mass, of, along Meadows Public Trails in the amount of $11,360 or greater or lesser sum. It should just read, "From the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund."
Yep.
That from, first from Community Preservation, open space should be eliminated, may I? We've actually drawn down that segment of the Community Preservation Act money in open space down to $50 with the other articles previously approved.
So, Paul, it's going to say from the Preservation Undesignated Fund? Or is it going to be from the?
Yes, no, from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund.
Mike, you can take out the comma as well. Actually, never mind, you keep that in.
I'll move, we approve this as amended by Mr. Pistorzak.
Second.
All right, all of those in favor? All right, Article Twenty-Two.
I'll move that we approve Article Twenty-Two.
Second.
All of those in favor?
I'll move that we approve Article Twenty-Three.
Second.
All of those in favor?
I'll move that we approve Article Twenty-Four.
Second.
All of those in favor? I didn't think I voted, I'm sorry.
You got it. That's what the tape's for.
I'll move that we approve Article Twenty-Five. Second.
Any discussion on this one? All of those in favor?
I'll move that we approve Article Twenty-Six.
Still in wrong, correct?
I had thought maybe we had an internal conversation, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, that maybe the legal, like the bylaw language, C, athletic field signage, should end with said funds to receive advertising fees associated with the Parks and Rec Department, collection of advertisement fees on athletic fields. And then, Paul, you were there, too, didn't we say that maybe from there on, said funds to be deposited, that was sort of like internal housekeeping and didn't need to be part of the bylaw?
I think, I, yeah, I think you're correct. I think that was more for the description, I don't think it ever made its way down. So starting at.
So after athletic fields?
Said fund to receive advertising fees associated with the Parks and Rec, yes, right.
So, so the way this is written now, it both sets a funding, I mean, it sets a funding limit, and then it creates the revolving fund. Shouldn't it do it the other way around? Set the revolving fund and then?
Well, you, you don't need the limit if you don't have the fund. So you have to have the, you know.
Do you have the Article Twenty-Five going before Twenty-Six?
No, 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 I'm, I'm looking at Article Twenty-Five.
Okay.
Twenty-Five says, to see if the town will vote to establish a funding limit, right? And then, you said athletic field signage, there should be an athletic field signage revolving fund that's provided under Mass General law. Shouldn't there be an athletic field signage, there should be an athletic field signage revolving fund first, and then?
Twenty-five.
Then amend, then?
Yeah, that's what it's doing. The Twenty-Five doesn't set the limit, Twenty-Six sets the limit.
Right. I understand that, I'm saying, within Twenty-Five, you've got two paragraphs, I'm saying, paragraph two should go before paragraph one. I'm not quite sure what the C is in front of the word athletic.
That's the bylaw. It's current bylaw, and we're adding.
I see what you mean.
Section Two.
So the, the existing bylaw is Chapter Thirty-One, Section Nine, there's A and B, which are two other revolving funds, and so what this warrant article is doing is setting up the format where the athletic field signage would be now new numbers subsection C under thirty-one nine.
Well, I, I think, I think you've got to say thirty-one nine subsection, I mean, we've got to stick the whole thing, not just the C.
Yeah. Nine, nine dot C.
Do you want to say at the beginning of the narrative, this fund is for the collection of advertising costs?
Wait a second, go ahead, Josh.
Have a motion, we've amended it.
Well, the problem, you know, I, we're at Article Twenty-Five, see if. And what's Twenty-Six going to say, Mike?
Chapter Twenty-Six establishes that funding limit.
Establishes the limit, yeah.
So the whole section, the whole, the whole section nine name is revolving funds established under MGL.
Correct.
Why don't you put a dash in between section nine and revolving funds?
Nowhere does it specify the use of this. It just says it can be used at the discretion of the director of the DPW.
To offset athletic field maintenance costs.
Yeah.
That was one of the things Barry said last week.
Whoa, 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 that's in the, that's in the explanation, that's not in the article. Yeah, we, we could, doesn't change, that doesn't go in the, that, the explanation has no legal bearing, no legal authority.
Right. It would be a bad idea to add that.
I mean, I, I'm okay with adding it to Twenty-Six, that says, the DPW director can withdraw funds for, for use of maintaining athletic fields.
Well, this, that just sets a policy, right? So that's a.
Oh, I guess you're right.
Yeah, so it should be in the first one.
Fine.
That's a good idea, Mark. That's a good idea, Mike. So at the end, and to be expended for the, for athletic field maintenance, to offset athletic field maintenance costs.
So basically how it originally was.
Yeah.
Right?
So...
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So, but maybe you can take, maybe you can get rid of the, like, betrayal of the funds, you know?
Yep.
Like, we don't need the town treasurer language and things like that, I don't think.
I think you can just cut out everything except before...
Athletic fields, right?
To add, said, said fund to receive advertising fees associated with the Parks and Rec Department, and to be expended to offset, to be expended by the DPW director to offset athletic field Said, uh...
I don't think you should say "is established at each annual town meeting."
Yeah.
Yeah, you can take that out as well.
The only question I have is, it says, said fund to receive advertising fees associated with the Parks and Recreation Department. Isn't it associated with advertising on athletic fields? Because there could be...
Right.
Parks and Rec could have a newsletter with, a bulletin with advertising fees.
Yeah.
We don't want that.
Okay.
Said funds to receive advertising fees associated with...
So, associated with advertising fees on athletic fields.
I don't think it's advertising fees associated with athletic fields.
Yeah.
Generated, generated.
For signage?
Advertising fees on athletic fields.
To receive advertising...
Associated with, related to athletic fields.
To receive advertising fees.
For signage on athletic fields, that's what it is. That's what it is.
Well, you might as well be consistent. This fund is for the collection of advertisement fees for signage on athletic fields.
But we don't need that anymore, because it already says it.
Well, now it just says on athletic fields. Oh, okay, you can cut out that whole part, actually.
And leave to be expended.
It says this fund to be expended, right? Or, yeah, to be expended.
There we go.
Is that through it? Yeah? Motion to accept warrant Article twenty-five as amended?
Second.
Section six, I think, if that's what I'm hearing.
Asking for a motion.
Oh, no, yeah, I got it, yeah. Motion to approve Article twenty-five as amended.
I'll second that one. All those in favor? On the topic...
I do have a question on this one. So how did we come up with the two hundred fifty K? Was this from Barry? Just a recommendation? Because we don't know how much revenue...
We, we don't, it's an estimate that she provided.
So what happens if, if we go over that number? I mean, that'd be great, but I don't...
Right, well, if we went, if essentially we collected two hundred and seventy-five, the twenty-five thousand would roll forward into next year, then you'd probably wanna, you know, have the spending limit be also reflected of that additional money.
Which is similar to what happened, I think, with...
Don's honor?
Yeah, would that be an example, I guess?
Yeah, because they were running too much money. Nice problem to have, that's all.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, it has to be established each year.
The spending limit has to be established each year, so that's why in the next article you'll see the spending limit for the council on aging. But those have to be established every year with these departmental revolving funds established under that statute.
Mike, I just have a question about the numbering system.
Yep.
We eliminated fifteen and sixteen.
Yep.
So the old seventeen then became fifteen?
Correct.
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
But keep approving them as the numbers they are now, and we'll renumber them after. So like when you're saying, "I approve Article twenty-six," I know that you're approving Article twenty-six in this current draft.
That was my question.
Yep.
You did not yet renumber them.
Nope.
That's all I want.
I move that we approve Article twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor? I move to read, so, Article twenty-seven?
Second.
All those in favor?
Article twenty-eight, the last sentence needs to be completed.
Yeah, so that...
You know, I think something like...
Yep, it was, it was cut out, yep. Actually, the fund allows the town to receive the funds, and...
And just because I'm knee-deep in this, we should just, I want to explain where the funding comes from. Receives a port, a fee from each Comcast customer. So pursuant to the town's cable license agreement with Comcast, the sound, the town receives funding through, I think, I wrote this out, now my notes don't make any sense.
It's, it's literally funding for PEG access.
Yeah, but it's not, it sounds like Comcast's just giving to us, it's a, it's a user fee.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Pass-through.
Comcast receives funding through a user fee paid by each Comcast customer. Or is it funds, you know, sort of directed by state statute? Isn't there a law saying they have... Well, it is, but they, they charge everyone three bucks a month. Yeah. But the only reason they give it to us is because of state statute. Oh, yeah, they have to. Not because they charge people. Well, no, they charge, they wouldn't give it to us if they didn't charge us. No, but they wouldn't give it to us if the state didn't say, "You have to provide access to public public television." Yeah, they'd charge it, they'd name it something else and charge it anyway. Because it's public access regulations that... Right. Cause the funding.
Funding from Comcast as paid from user fees, is that what we're trying to say in different words?
Right. She's funding Comcast. Well, see, you just don't want people to think that, well, we'd rather have our root user fees reduced and not have... Well, they ha... yeah, they have to, yeah.
Comcast subscribers.
Comcast has to do it, yeah. Paid by...
Paid by subscribers.
Comcast subscribers. Josh, why wouldn't we just say users' fees? Town receives user fees, that tells you who's paying them and...
Yeah, that's true.
What they are. The town receives user fees to support public education.
You can take the whole thing out, so go back to...
No.
Because it isn't funded from Comcast.
Pursuant to town's cable committee agreement with Comcast, the town receives users' fees to support public, I think that part's okay.
Technically, a user fee is a voluntary fee.
Mandatory user fees.
Well, maybe you say fees?
Fine, fees, well, we're try, we're trying, I was trying to imply...
Right.
Who's paying?
Subscribers.
Subscriber fees, right.
Oh, yeah, subscriber fees, yeah.
That's what we're going with? So not, we're taking out, receives funding from Comcast, we can say the town receives funding paid by subscriber fees.
Oh, the town just receives subscriber fees.
It's kinda wordy, but this is fine to me. It's clear.
All right, does that make more sense?
Still haven't finished the sentence, though. If it was your point.
Oh, yeah, to, to receive funds and, um... The purpose of it is so that it...
And to, uh...
Distribute.
Yeah, to expend the funds to...
For the purpose of it, yeah.
For operation of LCTV.
It's not into, that are expended.
Well, maybe we shouldn't mention LCTV, maybe we should just say coordinate, you know, of television access. The PEG, yeah, yeah. The PEG Corporation.
If, if this article passes, we will probably be back in the fall to transfer funds that we've accumulated prior to July first to put into that fund.
Okay.
That we currently have set aside.
You can take out expenditure.
Yep, and fund PEG access, cable-related needs.
Can we, can we say creation of the fund allows the town to receive the fees? Because that's funds through time and quick succession.
Yep.
I can imagine how many times funds is in this whole thing.
Yeah.
I'm just laughing because you almost need to start a file for the fall town meeting already.
I have one.
Why does it say PEG access cable?
I thought you were gonna make a fun pun.
Yeah, that's true. You can take out cable.
Yeah, I was just copying, to be consistent, the, uh, the fund.
I mean, I do still, I see Tom's point still, that it kind of reads as if we've entered into a contract to take these fees instead of kind of making it clear that this is...
Oh, we did.
Mandated by statute.
We did.
Yeah, but, right, isn't it mandated?
Yeah. Yeah, we have to have...
The contract was mandated, but we still entered a contract.
Yeah, we have to have a contract. We don't have to have a contract, but as part of the contract, we have to, we tell Comcast to get fees to run a check. If anybody has questions on that, the meeting, I will...
All right, you take that one, guys.
Could you just say pursuant to the state mandated town's cable license agreement? Just like put that, put the word mandated.
The contract's not mandated, we don't have to do it, I think. No, they have to have public access, that's... I know, but I don't think we have to have a con, we don't have to have a contract with Comcast. No, but we, whoever... They wouldn't give us cable unless we did, but...
The problem is creation of the fund, it says creation of the fund allows the town to receive the fees and fund PEG access-related needs. We don't need this fund to receive the fees, because we've been receiving them for years. Creation of the fund allows us to segregate the fees received.
We actually do, we do need to do this, though. We should have been doing it for forty years.
But we still receive the fees.
Right.
Says creation of the fund allows the town to receive the fees. I don't know that that's true.
Oh, that's true.
That's what you're saying.
Creation of the fund allows the town to segregate the fees and fund PEG access-related needs, which is what your point is, Paul, right? We're segregating the fees.
Right, we are segregating the fees. Without this, it would, they have to go into, they would go into the general fund technically.
Right.
It'd be appropriated every year.
It'd have to be appropriated every year.
So it should be the fees to fund PEG access-related needs.
Yeah, I, I believe also that they're gonna have to be appropriated every year out of this fund also. Says that they won't be co-mingle, they'll, they'll have it on separate.
Why don't we put in, before public, put mandated public educational government program? Well, yeah, there has to be a PEG provider, yeah. All right, I don't think we have a motion on this one yet. Well, I wonder if we should say, instead of just programming, to, um, access program or something like that? Because it's all, it's public access, educational access, governmental program, governmental access. I don't know if that makes a difference, but... Because it's mandated access. Well, it's, PEG is the acronym. Okay. So, I just say, I don't know. Well, but the voters are not gonna know PEG is that...
So what we do is, where it says mandated public educational government, after the word government, put in parentheses, PEG, none, then they'll know.
There you go.
Oh, PEG, okay, yeah, that's good help.
Okay.
Now we're, yeah, we're all knee-deep in it. Or, well, we could put PEG access programming, but...
Sure, why not?
You know, you know, because, because, you know, it's public access, you know, that's the term.
No, 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 Mike.
I got two, I got two programmings, Mike.
Mike, take out that, those two words, go back and then before the word programming...
Yep.
Put access.
There. All right.
Good job.
I can get a motion on that.
I'm only approving Article twenty-eight.
Second.
All those in favor? Who wrote the narrative for twenty-nine?
Uh, that's like a hybrid. I, I wrote that first, the first piece, and then the pun, Long Meadow Realty, who are the owners of the property, wrote the bounding information. The paragraph above the bounding information is just copied from all the previous warrant articles in which there has ever been a zone change, just copied the same language.
I just meant the last paragraph in the narrative.
The dis, the, um, the italic, the italicized?
Yeah.
Those are, that, that is all provided by the puns.
But I think it's inappropriate.
Yeah, absolutely. We gotta take out the second, that whole second paragraph there.
Let them stay, stand up and say it, but it doesn't explain the, has nothing to do with the art.
Well, so previously, um, in two thousand and six was the last time this particular lot came up, and they had a very similar description that was, you know, the, essentially the owner's reasons for wanting to pursue the zone change. I understand what you're saying, I think we can take it out, and they are current, for your information, they're currently working with Rebecca Townsend to have permission to do a presentation or to speak on the floor of town meeting, so we could just say, well, speak to it then.
I don't think the church had anything like this.
I don't, I think I recently looked at the church.
They did not, now that I think about it. They had a presentation, presentation on town meeting.
And they didn't have, do they have any, did they have any italicized narrative?
I think it's fine to say, like, this will rezone the lot next to Armadas or something, but, yeah.
Well, yeah, so in that case, if we take all of this out, I don't, I don't know that we do need any description at all, because it's, it would just be repeating what's in that first paragraph, right? Like, change it from resident A1 to business.
But I think it's worth explaining that this is the lot that is, I don't even know the direction, north of, of the, whatever it's called Plaza, Maple Road Plaza.
Instead of like just relying on this bounding information, we'll describe more specifically what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, the explanation should say, this is zoning by law change request is, is requested for the...
By the owners.
By the owners of the lot, you know, to the, to the north of, what's it called, Maple Road, something, it's got a formal name. I don't think we can use Armadas.
Maple Road Plaza.
Maple Road Plaza, so.
Maple Road Plaza, yeah.
And I wonder if we push it the, the square feet of the property, you know, because it has these, you know, two hundred feet here, you know, whatever.
But I don't know that we can calculate that.
I wonder if we could, you know, if you had the square foot, that would give people a rough idea of how many.
It might be wise to have a map available at town meeting to identify specifically.
Do we hand that out as like supplemental material? Or do you put it in the warrant?
It'd be three hundred square feet, right? What's that, two hundred?
At times, there were maps put in here, but as long as you had one, they could go up on the screen.
Hopefully, that's part of their...
During it, it might be a good idea, so people could... During it, it might be a good idea so people could see exactly where the
Hopefully as part of their presentation, they may provide that.
Right, it's okay, they'll have, they'll have boards.
I'll work with Rebecca on that.
I'm not exactly thrilled with the word proactive. I think that's
No, that, all that's
We'll take it all out.
We're gonna take it all out. We're gonna edit that.
I think, yeah, we should, it should just be the facts.
But it's approximately 300 square feet, right? 200 by 100, I mean, that's 300 square feet?
I think it's
The area.
That's 2,000 square feet, right?
I'm pulling up right now. It's, um
200 by 100, 2,000.
It's 0.4591 acres. So however we want to do it, but yeah. So I, I think it's fine to explain to people what this is, so when they're reading the warrant, they can do whatever they want in the presentation, uh,
Yeah.
Subject to what Rebecca says, but I think it is, it would be smart to put in here so people know if they're reading the warrant, oh, I want to go vote on that.
Yep.
So, so what's it gonna say, Josh?
You just want, in essence, the summary of what the request is, correct?
Yeah, so in italics, it would say this is to change the zone of the lot next to Armadas.
Whatever it says north of.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, if I may, while, if we're doing this, I think it's worth our saying that it's the owners of the property that are proposing this and it's not like the town bringing it forward like all the other warrant articles.
I wouldn't say that because they'll, I'm just thinking about the church.
It's not their petition. This is come, came from the, from the planning board, unfortunately. I mean, it's
Because, it came from the planning board because
I, I understand that, but it's
No, I'm asking, I'm asking specifically.
Differentiate it from a citizen's petition or an owner's petition.
I see. So they're, they're bringing it to the planning board and then the planning board
But it's not the planning board.
But it's not coming from the planning board.
Is recommending it. We referred it to the planning board for recommendations. This is going to have one underneath it, recommended by the planning board or not.
So
It's actually coming from this
No, it's coming from the planning board.
Well, they're, they're the proponent.
They're the proponent. And the, the planning board is just, they make a report whether or not they recommend it or not on the floor of town meeting, but they don't have the, the authority to not put this forward.
I have one of these, I have one of these in the slow metal tomorrow.
They don't have the authority to not put this on the warrant.
Yep.
That's correct.
Yeah, they either, it's on, it's either rejected or
And just to clarify too, their recommendation will be given only on town meeting floor. The only recommendations that you see in the warrant are actually No.
Finance committee.
Finance committee, one of the ones that are written in there. And occasionally, the, the planning board will provide a report if necessary.
Yes, I, I think it would be, this request is to change the parcel, the zoning
Change the zoning.
Designation of the parcel to the northwest of Maple Road Plaza.
Do you want to say the 0.41 something acres?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The 0.4591 acre. Before parcel, wait.
What'd you say?
Before parcel, it's Right.
Acre. And the map shows it's the northwest, is that what it is?
Right.
Okay. Is that the official title of the plaza? I know there's always some confusion.
That, you know what, it changes in every official document, except for this year, we have been, or this and last year, we've been consistently referring to it as Maple Road Plaza. Not shopping, just plaza. So I think we should continue to do that.
I think that's enough of a description that people know.
Right. Well, I wonder if you want to say off, it's on Shaker Road, heading north or whatever.
We could use the exact address if necessary.
There is no, uh, address.
There's no address.
That's true, yep.
So you can say of the 0.459 acre parcel on Shaker Road to the northwest.
Yeah.
With the, yeah, with the frontage on Shaker Road or something like that.
Okay.
Does this require a two-thirds vote or because it's
Zone change? At least, yeah.
Wouldn't that be, shouldn't that be noted on here?
All of the town council is currently looking at the warrant, reviewing it and just putting all the quantities of the vote in there. So all that information is going to be in the warrant, printed and on the motion sheet. Some of them are four fifths, two, I think someone changed their two thirds.
Someone changed their two thirds.
It is, it is, correct. So all of that will be listed in there.
All right, I'll move that we approve Article 29 as revoked.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Has the, um, this isn't the zoning one, but has planning board had their hearing on this?
They have on, on this and then the, on April 3rd, they're having two public hearings, one for the article that we just discussed and then the other for the other zoning by law change petition from the building commissioner to add the code enforcement officers to the zoning code.
Right. Well, now I'm remembering, yeah, somebody from the planning board comes up.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I'll move we accept Article 30.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, and Article 31, this is, I had a conversation after the last meeting with Mike about whether these could be combined and since it's taking two separate actions, you have to delete one article to put on the other. So that's why it, we kept it as this. Thank you for that, Mike.
The wording on this, it says, or, or what it will do in relation there to, I know that's just the warrant. When did that change from or take any other action relative there to which we've said for years and years?
I, I copied this from previous town meetings. I looked at previous town meeting warrants and just copied the language there. And I think that this language was from the E code, so last town meeting was the one that I looked at for the model of this.
It's possible that when we receive those articles from E code,
They may have drafted it that way.
They may have drafted it that way and we never changed it over to our personalized or any other action relative there to. So if you would like to see consistency, we could change it.
I think we ought to just be consistent.
It sounds better too, if we give any other action.
Yeah, this leaves it very open-ended, actually.
And, uh
I think it just started here.
Yeah, they didn't do it in 31.
It says, or what it will do in relation there to in the previous one. So, yeah, so 30, yeah.
Yeah, so we ought to change that 30.
Yeah, and it will say that for the remainder of the articles that I wrote, so.
So we'll make those edits.
That doesn't carry through to the motions anyway, but.
Correct.
Okay, we have motion on 31 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Settle through 31.
All right, all those in favor? Article 32, we're also going to change the other, take any other action relative there to. Motion on Article 32 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor? Article 33. 33 is on page 23, wait down there.
I move we approve Article 33.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move we approve Article 34.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
We're making, yeah, we're changing all these, Mike.
Yep, all of them are updated.
All right, then Article 35 is our voter registration deadline change.
I move we approve Article 35.
Second.
Anything further on that one? Tom? All those in favor? Jump the gun. Um, and then finally, Article 36, our bylaw amendment. For the zoning enforcement officers.
Corinne. Excuse me, this, this one doesn't have that, any of that language. I believe we've been changing.
I don't know for, that's a good question, because I'm trying to check if it's in the zone change one.
Okay, or at the end of, at the end of paragraph two, I think it should say, or take any other action relative there to.
Okay, it does say it there, okay.
Yep.
Just got to copy it over.
I would, I would do it after as follows.
Yeah. Or, uh, put it before that, actually.
Yeah.
Oh, no, you're right. Corinne, you're right.
It goes after as follows.
So the, the narrative on this one, is it to delegate all authority or is it just signing, issuing tickets? Because they do have authority now.
Issues tickets.
Enforcement powers. So the, the issuing of tickets is the issuing of fines.
Okay.
And that's the enforcement. So part of the, what you don't totally get from just looking at this is that if you're not comparing it side by side to the original, is that the way that the zoning by law is currently written, one and two are not, those are, they're not separated. It's one paragraph and it doesn't have any numbers there. And so it's actually very confusingly written, even without the code enforcement officers, where it's, it's confusing the powers of enforcing the bylaw, which is what the first sentence is, the zoning by law, because this is in zoning. And then after that, it gets into issuing of building permits, which is not a zoning by law. Yeah, so, so we're kind of fixing two birds with one scone here, where the, we're adding that underlined sentence, we're separating into two paragraphs to show what the different powers are of the code enforcement off, uh, not, sorry, of the building commissioner. And then adding the code enforcement officers only to that first one to make it clear that they do not have the powers associated with number two there.
All right, so I think we should say in the narrative that this is also to delineate responsibilities and powers.
Will officially enable the building commissioner to delegate enforcement powers to the new code enforcement officers and to delineate, um, the building commissioners role between zoning enforcement officer and building commissioner. As a start.
Delegate enforcement powers to the new code enforcement officers.
And other duties?
We're delineating what the enforcement officers can do.
We're also delineating the
Well, building inspector has both, has both powers.
They do, that, or that, that role does, but the way that it's currently written in the zoning by law conflates the two. It, like, the way that I don't, whoever drafted that, the way that it reads, it conflates the two. And so we know what the building code enforcement, or what the code enforcement officer is supposed to do, but this is fixing that, yeah. And, and by way of fixing that, it's also making it clear that the code enforcement officers only are sharing in that one role of the building commissioners.
Yeah, that was conflating zoning enforcement officer and agents.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
And building inspector, Mike.
Yep.
Yeah.
I know, it's like a loss for words.
Uh, we say commissioner.
I'm sorry, yes.
If we go up top
Maybe say, sorry, sorry, Mark.
Go ahead.
And to delineate the building commissioners' powers between zoning enforcement officer.
Authority.
Because authority, thank you.
Let's put an apostrophe in there.
No, it's S apostrophe, no, it's apostrophe S.
Yeah, that's wrong.
What did we say, Mark?
If you go up to, what's underlined is new.
Yep.
Yes.
Everything else is already there.
Yes, so the, the two numbers are underlined and then that, that one sentence is underlined. Everything else is verbatim as exists, but now separated into two paragraphs.
It'd be nice to be able to tell people that, don't argue with what's written in paragraph two because it didn't change.
Yeah, we put the narrative, the underlined, this adds the underlined language.
Through the addition of the underlined words above.
Yeah, so through the addition of the underlined words above this proposed revision of the zoning.
We put that for all the stormwater stuff too.
That, so again, I use the formatting that general code used because they were doing all the same things, striking some things, adding new language, just revising existing language by separating it, and there's so many different ways of indicating, I mean, it, it's not described right now, so that is something we could do. Actually, those articles don't even have descriptions because the warrant articles themselves are so long.
Oh, yeah. But isn't there, there's italics in there, isn't there descriptions?
Yeah, so in, just as in, I don't, can't remember what warrant article that is right now, one of the ones that's right above this. So in those warrant articles, the italics are not descriptions. Those are totally new, that's totally new language, the italicized. That's also the case in one of the ones that's not related to stormwater that's brought forward by another department in here. I'm not remembering what that is right now.
So Corinne, what's going to happen at town meeting floor, somebody's going to stand up and say, I move Article 32 as written in the warrant.
Yeah.
And it's going to be seconded. And then they're going to say, will somebody speak to Article 32? And generally, that's when we read the comment. What do you want us to say about those general by law changes? And they ought to be in there, in my opinion, as the comment.
So Corinne, just for a little background, for the general code articles, we had a similar description for each one of them because even though they were each doing something different, in essence, they were all doing a similar thing. It was, they were either recoding, renumbering, or, or so on. So we can create something similar.
But that wasn't in the warrant, or that wasn't in the word itself, I checked. They didn't have descriptions.
It was in the motions. We put it in the motions.
Oh, so you had cop, the select board had copies of it, but it wasn't in, so I could I guess this could happen two ways. I could, I could write something for you all to, to speak to and just not include it in the warrant article for the reason that I just said, which is that it's already, they're already so long and we're already using italics and underlines and all these other ways and it's a way of keeping that separate. People don't think it's part of the article. Or I could write something, and we could put it in the article and it will just be an extra paragraph at the end of these, you know, which people may or may not see, given that they're pages long anyway. I don't know how you prefer it.
Tom, you read those at the last meeting, right, on the E code?
Yeah.
He did read them all.
When you get the motion.
No, but he, he kept reading the explanation over and over. I remember that, but it wasn't in the warrant.
Right, on the motion sheet, it'll say, as written in the warrant, and then when you speak to this, there'll be a description in, in that way. I don't know if necessarily
Essentially to comply with our MS4 approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the, I know that this doesn't, the whole thing doesn't get read out loud, but the, in some ways, the description is already in the article and that, I, when something's being added, right above it, it says, for, like, for example, if we're looking at, what number are we on here? Article 32. When it gets into specific revisions, you know, it says section 295 When it gets into specific revisions, you know, it says section two ninety-five fifty-four A one is amended, and then the underline is the amended piece, and then section two ninety-five fifty-four A three is added. So it's in the warrant article what exactly is happening with that language. So that, so the description can be more like this is required by the MS four permit, we're in MS four community, here's what MS four is.
I think so, I think that's good.
Okay. And also, so that you know, I have drafted, I'm waiting until the warrant article numbers are actually set, but I, I've drafted a explainer sheet, just like Lynn did for the E-code things, for every warrant article. So there could, there'll be a separate handout for, for example. Chop articles, not warrant articles, but code articles four and five, and, or chapter two ninety-five, article four and five, and one for the wetland code, and one for the zoning code, so people can refer to those as the questions come up. That have both a narrative description, actually, that's probably what I will give you to use to read, I'll cut that, so you can just read off of that. And then they also have a line-by-line description of why we're doing what we're doing, if anybody's curious about any particular pieces.
I guess my advice, Corinne, is keep it as simple as we can for, because if we overcomplicate it, people just throw up their arms and say, I can't get it, I'm voting against it.
Yeah, it's pretty much what we have to do.
Yeah, these are just one-pagers for each.
I understand, we have to do it, Josh, but if people throw up their arms and say, I'm not going to vote for it.
No, but I think that's the explanation, you have to do it. Do we have a motion on?
I'm, I'm moving so, Article thirty-six.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, and from the new business.
Just to close that out too, we began discussing some consent agenda processes, and in the order that it's structured currently, there is possibility for straight-through consent agendas and not having to, like, we had at that one meeting where we had to flip back and forth, we won't, we won't have any of that, it'll, it'll all be, you know, following through.
Good. And who's going to put those together, Mike, you, Rebecca?
Rebecca and I are working on it now, yeah, and Corinne will be involved with that also.
Okay, and on new business, we have, oh, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
MVP Resilient Capital Planning Process Working Group.
Yes. So as part of our currently awarded MVP action grants, which, as a reminder, is umbrella funding the climate resilient update to our long-range plan, we've received funding for a task to pull together a working group to look at our capital planning process as it currently occurs in town, and to work with, for the working group to work with the planning consultant, in this case, it's subcontract to beta engineers, to start incorporating some climate resilience and climate mitigative criteria into the, the capital planning process. So right now, there's not currently a way for, when department heads submit their proposals to Lynn, which, you know, then gets forwarded to the capital planning committee, and then ultimately here, there's no questions or guidelines or criteria to sort of weigh the town's goals, if they, you know, if there's any stated, and the projects that are being proposed, and there's no way to sort of weigh, are the projects that are being proposed, let's just say, by DPW, because it's an easy one to understand, DPW is proposing to replace a culvert with a culvert of this size in this model. There, there's no way for any of the reviewing bodies to know, well, is this culvert scaled to ten years from now precipitation data that's projected with climate change? So the consultant will work with the working group to make sure that we understand what the local impacts of climate change are and will be here, and how to start modeling our, like, climate, sorry, our capital planning applications that the department head submits to reflect those, given their projects. In some cases, it will be irrelevant, you know, we need a. Let's say the police station needs their kitchen upgraded, no matter what. In that case, actually, maybe we'd say, like, well, are these appliances Energy Star rated? And in other cases, it will be highly relevant, such as the DPW example I just gave you. So the working group, as we've conceived of it, will be made up of the DPW director, the police chief, the fire chief, emergency management director, town manager, myself, and a member of the select board, a member of the capital planning committee, and a member of the finance committee, should those two committees delegate a member. And should you delegate a member? There will be two working groups in FY twenty-three, and then two more in FY twenty-four, for a total of four working groups total, and then the resulting deliverable will be a memo with proposed revisions to our current process by the engineer.
I don't, I don't want to sound, why? I mean, why don't we just say capital plan should look forward? I mean, why do we need working groups and get consultants when we're saying, I mean, the examples you gave are very good examples, I think. You know, we're doing culverts, capital plan committee should be asking questions consistent with, you know, our, our MVP program. But they have a working group and put, I think it just is overcomplicating the process. Not to mention the fact that the entire capital planning process is. Is, is, is under review at, at worst, and not working at, you know, also, and that's part of the, Josh, if you recall, that the recommendations of our, of our charter review committee had a lot of changes proposed to the, how the capital planning process is used. And I think if nothing else, this year's, this year's actions on the capital planning project, process, and capital planning lists showed us that, that, you know, to put together another task force to tell the capital planning group how they need to work when they're already not working well, to me is, is difficult at best.
To, to me, a problem this big, there, climate change, and considering, there's a lot of questions, we can say, yeah, think about this, but for something like this, that's this big, I think it's smart to bring in the experts, and we have, this is being part of a grant process, right, so.
It's paid for by the grant.
Yeah, it's paid for by the grant, so I, I think that it's, it's already there, it's smart to do, because they're going to bring up things that we couldn't in a million years, and if we have better questions to ask capital planning to, to help guide, to help think bigger and longer, I think we should take care, take advantage of it. Tom?
Well, it almost seems like a, a report card, you know, in a sense, you're saying, here's the projects, and these are As, because they're not going to affect climate change, and these here are a little sketchy, you know, the carbon footprint may be much greater on some projects, and, you know, just to be aware of it, not that. I mean, if you, if you're buying a culvert, and they say this has to come from Georgia, and it has to be trucked all the way up here, well, that's a big carbon footprint, you know, and, and maybe you can't change that.
I thought, Tom, it was more like, is the culvert sized, like, the example that Corinne used?
Yeah.
You know, are you sizing the culvert for the rain today, or are you sizing culvert for the rain in twenty seventy? You know, because in twenty seventy, we're going to get more severe than major rain, whatever it is, I mean, you know. I get it, maybe there's a, a long list of things to do, I'm just saying that it's, it's adding complexity to a capital planning process that needs a lot more than just this, maybe that's my easiest way to put it.
If, if I might speak to that too, that, I want, I just want to be clear, that the part of the capital planning process that this will mostly impact is the very, very beginning, when the department heads are coming up with the projects and then proposing them. So I do, I do not know that, you know, because the consultant will ultimately make recommendations, I don't know what those will be, but I do not know that the capital planning committee, for example, who receives them after Lynn, you know, who receives the plan after Lynn, will be encouraged to or recommended to be discussing climate change in and of themselves. It's more of a, making sure that the projects, by the time that they get to these final stages, have had those considerations built in. So that way Lynn is able to look at the revised application and see, yes, are DPW thought about these things? Ultimately, they are still the experts, and they, they kind of know what they need, but they might not know. We're not, no one's going to argue with the DPW that they need the culvert replacement, but it's just, how can we shape what that culvert replacement looks like? And how, how are other communities, one of the things the consultant will do is look at how other forward-thinking communities are doing this within their capital planning process and taking lessons learned from that, and I think that's one of the valuable. That's one of the reasons to have a consultant to do this, because we all, you know, we're, all of our hours are spoken for as is, so with our current job. So the consultant, as opposed to us doing it in-house, will have that luxury to spend the time researching and coming up with best practices and case studies.
Thanks, Corinne. I think we should put the new guy on.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think it makes sense too, I mean, I, you know, I don't have liaison assignments yet, you know, until we do a rework, so, yeah, I'd be happy to do this.
I'll second the motion. Do we need a vote on this, Corinne? Or just?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll nominate Veneth to be on the, I'm sorry, the liaison, the select board member of the Climate Resilient Capital Planning Working Group.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, good luck, buddy. Next up on the new business, we have the Franconia, I'm sorry, the Clubhouse Cafe at Franconia Golf Course, seasonal renewal for their liquor license, everything in order, Mike?
Everything's in order, standard seasonal renewal that we do in, in March, runs from April first through January fifteenth. All is in order with all of their documents passed due, balances from the treasurer and collector, all current to date, so.
And any violations?
No.
I move we renew the seasonal liquor license for Clubhouse Cafe.
Second.
All those in favor? And finally, we have two LACCF applications for one-day liquor licenses for an event on April twentieth and for an event on April sixth. And we have two separate applications and two separate fees, everything in order?
We, we collected for both already.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move, we approve a one-day liquor license for international dinner Portuguese food on four twenty, twenty-three? Yeah.
Four six and four twenty-three.
There's another one on the sixth.
Looks like, yeah. And we will also add the other one, which is a art show, they want a liquor license for four six twenty-three.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? And we have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you, everyone, good night.